I don't know if you want to put it on the calendar, but maybe it's June tenth, maybe, this June.
So it'd be the, yep.
Or is that the eleventh?
No, the tenth is a Tuesday.
I, I will be there, okay.
That was the second day this year that I was gone.
You're gonna be gone too?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I will be gone here.
I was gone next week in June tenth. Be at a convention.
You know, if there's anything that's just kind of a right game, we do always have to have a meeting if nothing's going on.
Well, we don't the first Tuesday in June sometimes because of elections.
Yeah.
It is eight o'clock.
Okay, alright, eight o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for public discussion?
Sure.
Alright, Phil, come on up.
Um, over the weekend, I had the U S facility, our um, air conditioner quit working. Um, so yesterday, got ahold of Willie and Willie went out and looked at it with, I don't know, some of the HVAC guys here in town. And um, our unit needs to be replaced. So that building has two heating units and two air conditioning units, and they're both are built in nineteen eighty-five, or quit in ninety-five. So our best option is just to replace them. Last time when I left, I don't know what it was, when you went out there, it was seventy-eight, eighty degrees in there, and that's where they sleep. It was pretty warm in there. So we have to do something.
And this is at the hospital, right?
Yeah, yeah, as I was gonna clarify.
What's the background on that building? Do we own it?
We own it, yes.
Yeah, do you own it?
It sits on hospital property, which we lease for like for a hundred years or whatever that one says, but we own the actual building.
This is not the part attached to the hospital, is it separate building, or is it attached?
It is.
So the number is worth of ambulances.
Correct.
But it's got a separate system for heating.
Yeah, there's two sides, and I assume they'll put two back in?
They're, they're heat pumps, so. And then they have electric backup in them, which runs a lot of water. Phil can get your price on both gas and electric, the heat backup.
Air-to-air heat pumps, or what? Is that, I have, I'm not, I, I do have a preconceived notion, but, but, but uh, it, it, the air-to-air is, is it worth it, does it? Or just cold?
The heat pump, yeah, it does alright out there, I mean, when it gets cold, the newer ones are better when it gets cold, I mean, obviously, that's when the electric would kick in, the electric bank, but I would recommend going back with the heat pump and then having gas and backup when it can't keep up, because it's gonna save you money the long run. Is there gas there? We have to, I'm going, soon as I'm done here, I gotta call him, we're gonna go out, he's gonna sort of put his numbers together for you, and that stuff. I would assume so, because they have boilers out there, they can't run in boilers on electric.
They might have the gas in that particular building.
Maybe not, we'll have to.
Yeah, we'll see.
Who pays the utilities above? You guys, you guys do?
Yeah.
How do they separate that out?
They have separate meters.
Separate, they have a water meter, electric meter?
The hospital, the hospital actually pays the bill, but they send us a bill based on what we are usages, so we pay the hospital for our utilities.
And they know, and they know your usage because of the separate meter?
Yeah, it's, there must be, well, one meter that goes in the building, then there's a separate meter where it comes to us.
There's like a water meter, for, I know for a fact, the water meter is, it, it's a water meter, but it don't have nothing to do with any use, it just regulates when they calculate what they use, and that's how they pay it.
Same way with electric, there's a separate electric meter over in their bank, which shows what comes to our facility.
That's what I did with, like, my business shop, I just had a separate meter and reimbursed tenants for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Lot of choice.
Well, how's your fund balance? Because that's where it's gonna have to come out of.
Yeah, and tha- and that's the thing with the budget amendment coming up, we're gonna have to know quickly, um, because it's gonna be posted in the, in the paper.
What the amount is, correct. So I told Willie, we could get a price today, so I can get that back to you today, from what the amount is.
Yeah. Yeah, because it'll have to be, in order to be published next week, in order to meet the deadline, we have to have it to the paper. Sweet City Bank on Friday, so.
And yesterday, I was actually putting together numbers for my meeting for tonight. And as of May first, we're about ten thousand dollars over projected revenue for this fiscal year, we still have, you know, dues to come yet. So even with the budget amendment, we should still end up with a positive fund balance just on this year, not touch any prior fund balance. Our call revenue is what's above what we projected, our, our tax level is pretty much right on track with what we projected, our call revenue is above what we projected.
I think it's thirty grand or so, around twenty?
It should be less than twenty grand, but I can't go beyond that. Cause they're.
Two units, yeah.
If you've ever been in the ceiling of the attic, or not the attic, the ceiling of that building, they've trained forty pounds of track in, in bomb bag. It's gonna be a job. You can't, you can't even hardly change filters in the units, it's so bad.
We have to bend the furnace filters, put them in up there, and then try to straighten them back out and get them in place. So it'll be a good change for that part, because our furnace filters do not get changed like they should, because it's such a job to do it.
Alright, well.
So I know it's not an agenda, but I just kinda like some guys, you know, move forward, so that we can get them some temperature control back in there. As we get numbers and stuff, I can keep you informed from there.
It's five o'clock tonight.
Yes. At the.
Kyle's not gonna be there, so I'm gonna form as the alternate.
At the complex, yeah. Sound good?
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay. See, oh, any, anyone else in public discussion, I guess? And if not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda and minutes dated April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion by Haas, second by Wacter. Uh, any discussion on the agenda or minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Discussion decision to review and approve the claims, has everyone seen the claims? Time to go through, questions? Otherwise, I'll take a motion. Whenever you're ready. Okay, there's a motion by Haas, second by Gorman, any discussion on the claims? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. We'll acknowledge the budget status report, everyone had a chance to look at that. Questions? Thanks, Tammy. Okay, we'll acknowledge that, and then, in the record.
You do the old thing?
And then, discussion decision, and Nick just walked out, assigned tax sales certificate. Please come back, okay. Discussion decision to sign tax sales certificate number two zero two-two dash two two three zero two, parcel number eight two zero one three one eight four three four zero zero three.
Well, um, there's an individual from Fenton, um, they're not here, so it's gonna be a heartbeat day. But they're interested in taking assignment to a county health tax sales certificate, it's a neighboring property, did you guys get a map?
Yes, yep.
Okay, good, so you can see, um, what it is, is this individual on this, with this parcel right here, that, that ends in zero zero four, that's where they live. They would like to take assignment to this parcel, or the certificate to the parcel, just to the north of them. So, and, but, they're not here, so.
Did you wanna wait?
Who is it?
Uh, Alana Lauk?
Finch, is it?
Says Lauk, but.
Yeah, that's the owner, that she bought that one before I, I'm assuming.
Oh, okay, okay.
It is now, uh, Alana Finch.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can.
What's it all mean, I mean, it just means they're buying it for the taxes against it?
What, what they would do, um, it's in a situation where the county's holding the ta- the tax sales certificate. The board, um, usually, if someone's interested in taking assignment to this certificate, the board usually assigns it, and they, you know, with, um, with the understanding that once deed is issued, all the delinquent taxes would be evaded. And then, that person has to do delay work to take deed to the property. They would have to hire an attorney, um, do a lien search, notify all recorded lien holders, the city of Fenton, and things like that, and then wait there, the ninety days after the affidavit of services filed with the treasurer's office. And then, if no one redeems in that ninety days, um, a tax deed will be issued.
It's free to them at that point?
Pretty much, but, yeah.
And we, and they don't have to pay the taxes either?
The delay, anything, right, that's how it's been done, um, and then, it'll at least go back, you know, to somebody who's, who's like, gonna pay taxes.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming this property is pretty, yeah, okay, yep.
Very bad.
Very similar to some of the ones we've done in Lurin, yeah, yep.
Trying to figure out where it's at. I mean, I'm looking at the map, I'm just trying in my head to figure out.
Well, it's on the west end of town, kind of in the north part.
Oh, in the north part?
A block south of Main Drive, or?
It's a block west, I believe, of the main road that runs downtown, and then, south of downtown, otherwise, so.
Is there any reason we shouldn't do it?
No, I, I don't think so. I don't think so, I think anytime you can get a property back on the tax roll, or get it in the hand of someone who's gonna pay taxes on it, is probably a good thing.
And clean up, and clean up their community, yeah.
That's kinda always nice.
Yes, and, and, and a lot of times, these, these people, yes, they're doing it to help clean the town up, and, and uh.
There's no, there's no hook that they have to clean it up, or, or, I mean?
No, there's not.
We're, we're not imposing any.
No, no.
It's just an assumption as they will.
Well, I think she expressed that they were going to add a, which most of them do, that, that do, um, a situation like this.
Cause they're wanting it to clean it up.
Yes, matter of fact, they want the next two north of them also. But they're not on tax sale yet.
Okay. The else?
They're kind of.
I bought one for that reason too.
Alright, well.
But, I don't know, we can, I'll keep an eye out for her, let you guys continue your meeting, and.
We need her, or?
No.
Well, I mean, we, you, we could do it with the stipulation that, you know, we can assign it, but if she doesn't want it anymore, the assignment will go away.
I understand, you wanna know if she's still.
Right.
Well, we can, we can always come back.
Does she have to come today? Does that mean she doesn't want it?
Well, I don't know why, I haven't heard from her, so I don't know if she's coming or not. And, um, I mean, she might, she had, maybe had something, I don't know, but she'd always do this again, but if you guys wanna make the decision that you would assign it with the stipulation that she still wants the property and is willing to pay, like, um, I think what they usually do will be a ten dollar certificate fee. And then, in the past, what they've done is pay the drainage, and there is, there are three drainage assessments on this property in the amount of fifteen dollars.
Total.
Which you cannot forgive them, really, yeah, you cannot forgive them, right?
But there's, I mean, there's total, it'd be, um, fifteen, twenty dollars with the penalty.
Twenty dollars for drainage?
Yeah, with that's with the penalty.
How long does it take tax wise to get to this point? Is this five years, or how long does it take?
Well, this, this was a twenty twenty-two certificate, I mean, and it, as soon as the county takes, um, a tax sales certificate, or is forced, because once a property goes on tax sale for a year, and no investors pick it up, then it'll go another year if the taxes aren't paid. And if no one picks up that second year, then the county's forced to take it on tax sale. And then, anytime after that, someone can take an assignment to it.
What do, what do, what are the unpaid taxes allowed to, not if it doesn't matter, I'm also curious.
Um, since twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, roughly two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Total, or is it?
Total.
Total.
Yeah, we're not talking a lot of tax, you know, taxes, so, I mean, the city would, I could do a lot of kinds of cities that are kind of glad to see this, and, you know, they don't mind the taxes being evaded, because they're not gonna get much in life, you know.
What happens in a situation where they find that there's a lien against the property, I mean, what, what happens?
That is why, that is why they're required to do a re- a lien search and notify any recorded lien holder.
Okay.
So then that lien holder has the right to redeem also, to protect their position. But if they don't, that was their warranty.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the tax sales certificate.
Assignment of tax.
Assignment of tax sales, pending the desire of the applicant to still, to, to still want it.
And that, well, can we add in that, once we get tax, once a tax deed is issued, um, all the delinquent taxes be evaded? We don't wanna do that beforehand, because what if they, what if the owner didn't redeem, so I mean, they, we want them to redeem.
Right. Tammy, we know what we want.
So, did you say once the deed is issued?
Yeah, once tax deed is issued.
To, um, waive all taxes, or delinquent taxes?
Yeah, to all the taxes that are on the book, is what we usually do.
Everyone understand?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, um.
I think.
There's a motion second, any more discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
Well, she shows up, we fill out paperwork, and we're done, thank you.
Good, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, we can acknowledge the transfers made by the Cassuth County Auditor from General Basic to Secondary Road in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents, and from Rural Basic to Secondary Road in the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety cents, made on May first. What the record reflect, we acknowledge those. Okay, and then, discussion decision to set date and time for the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment hearing number two.
Okay, so, I am requesting that you set the date and time for the second budget amendment hearing for May twenty-seventh at eight thirty a.m. I did put in your board folders, kind of what the, um, resolution and the amendment will look like. Um, there may be a couple changes, one, um, Phil, if he gets that added, that'll be added to it. The other possible change is for non-state shelter, um, there is somebody right now in the shelter, um, and we are already over what, what that amount, so it all depends on how long that person is gonna be staying. Donna talked to Nate Conlin yesterday, he did suggest, um, budgeting that through June, just in case. We originally budgeted a thousand, um, but I did, um, ask Donna to figure out an approximate amount through June, so that we're not short, um, so that a thousand dollars could increase. Um, those are the only changes that I'm anticipating, um, but before it's published, I will email you.
So what, what line number is this change, you're talking about changes?
So all of them, or just that one I was just talking about?
I don't know, I don't.
Okay, so, so the.
I, I, I did give them a quick look-through, and I didn't see very many changes, if I saw.
Yeah, no, there's not a lot, there's just seven thousand dollars, um, in miscellaneous, and that one is, I'll pull up my thing, that's for the audit, um, so the auditing firm increases every year, and I did not change that amount, so we need another seven thousand dollars in there for the audit. The second one is mental health, so because our region is, will no longer be in existence after June thirtieth, um, they're closing out, they're giving, um, our, um, not advocate, is it, is she a advocate?
Yep, yep, Nellal advocate.
They're getting incentives to stay through June thirtieth of twenty thousand dollars. So they're getting that, plus, um, she'll be paid out for her vacation time that she has left. But that amount is being reimbursed to us, so it's not like that is coming out of our budget, so that's why you'll see that on the revenue and the expense, because that amount will be coming from Care Net Connections to pay for that as well, so.
This fiscal year?
Yes, so you will see for that, both, on both sides there. And then, the other thing is the million-dollar internal loan, uh, we did for the Buffalo Township Urban Renewal.
Okay.
And that's already been done, this is just the amendment to.
Correct, you got it.
The transfer was done last year, but this is the amendment to put it in the budget.
Yeah.
We had this HVAC issue, and you said we hurry up and get a price if you wanted it, what, what if they, I mean, what if it happened two weeks from now, what do we do? Put it on next year's budget, or?
Well, it'd still go back, I don't know what we would do, that would be, because, um, uh, because of accrual, it, it's still gonna count as this year's budget, it's because it was paid for now, um, so if it happened two weeks from now.
You could have another budget amendment, we just don't wanna do that.
Well, not after May thirty-first, you can't.
Oh, you, no, you can't, you can't, you can't.
So.
So, go ahead, is your question answered?
Well, I'm not sure, so, so if, if the HVAC goes down on June fifth, what do you do in that case, then? If you can't do it?
Wait till July first to pay them?
Well, you, you wouldn't be able to do anything till July first.
How can you do anything? You'd have to sit there and sweat, literally, or?
Well, I mean, I don't know. Because it's get, you'd, you'd end up with, unless, depending on where his fund is standing. He can have a negative line item, as long as the service area and department isn't over. So he could pay for that, as long as he's not a negative in his department and his service area, so.
And how is that looking for him?
I don't know, I have not had a chance, he just called me last night, so I have not had a chance to look at anything. Okay, thank you. So, yeah, he, he called me after hours last night, so I haven't had a chance to look at anything.
My question's more for the, the internal loan. Should we amend it, should we have, shouldn't we have amended the budget before we did that?
No, when we, because it was a transfer, from, a transfer in and transfer out, and it pretty much a wash, Elizabeth just said to, when we did our budget amendment, to add it in.
But was the, the transfer budgeted for?
No.
So how can, okay, I guess I don't know how we can transfer money that is in the budget to transfer.
Yeah, that's why Elizabeth said, just to add it to the next budget amendment.
I believe it. I don't know, but I believe it.
So you're looking to set the date and time for this for May twenty-seventh at eight thirty? Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Wacter. There's second. Gorman, second. Any discussion on?
What was that?
Time and date.
What was that?
May twenty-seventh, eight thirty in the morning. Any discussion on that? If not, uh, do your roll callers all favor.
Um, you can.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, oh, I guess we gotta wait till eight thirty, don't we? For the reading of the ordinance?
Yeah.
So. Five-minute break.
Are the auditors still here? For them?
Yep.
You'd come in. Signed up, didn't you?
Yep.
Well, you're, you're taking a five-minute break?
Yep, gotta wait till eight thirty. Little early for a five-minute break.
There it goes, and then you only get this five minutes. Such thing as too early.
Did you start planting, Howard?
Start planting April seventh, yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're not done with the corn yet, we've been waiting for it to dry out, so, it sounds like it's getting dry now. We have about a day and a half of corn left. We planted about a day's worth of beans. Sunday and yesterday, we've been having plenty of problems.
Okay. Now, we just got a new case, twelve-year-old planter. Every day, something else is wrong, and computer stuff.
Well, ours has been more physical than, than, than electronic.
Okay.
But, uh, it, it, my, I have a twelve-year-old planter too, and it's discouraging to watch the twenty-fours and the sixteens that go ten miles an hour.
Yeah. Oh, we just, we just started, well, I guess there was, there was one field planted, I guess, in, in April, but just started yesterday.
We should have thought of it, when the seventeenth was coming up, when somebody started to peep through on Sunday, or Saturday.
I've noticed a few, yeah.
The people that were, seventeenth is a Thursday, the people that were going early that week, there's, there's, every time I pull the end of the lane up farm, I gotta look at this beautiful field of corn now that's up, it's not by.
Question, so, this passage, just so, eighteen years, is it in county parks and recreation areas, or just county parks?
Just, just.
Good morning, ladies.
Okay, well, Morris Gold, so he's, I can't understand.
Well, I kinda understand what he's getting at, I'm gonna talk to Deb a little bit about it, um, first, I talked to him quite a while on the phone, and I just said, you know, I gotta, I just talked to Doug, they'd seen.
If you'd like to, what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I, I had a little idea, yeah, and so I said, I'm not gonna jump to any conclusion until I talk with him.
There are the, yeah. I know what it's about, for.
I know, I know. I think it's, it sounds to me like it's about staying in.
Yeah, I heard a little bit about it.
Yeah, kinda.
Yeah, kind of. Few, so right, but discussion.
It's eight thirty, but we're waiting, Josh.
Yeah.
Okay, it is eight thirty. Uh, Kendall, we're gonna go ahead with the first reading of the amended ordinance one fourteen C. Regulating the operation of all terrain vehicles and off-road vehicles in Cassuth County, Iowa. Is the ordinance? Give me one second here. Okay. Cassuth County Ordinance Number One Fourteen C. An ordinance regulating the operation of all terrain vehicles and off-road vehicles in Cassuth County, Iowa. Section one, purpose. This ordinance shall designate the county secondary roads where all terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles may operate. Section two, definitions. The definitions of terms used in this ordinance are, number one. All terrain vehicle as defined by Iowa Code Section Three Twenty One. Means a motorized vehicle with not less than three and not more than six non-highway tires. That is limited in engine displacement to less than one thousand cubic centimeters. And in total dry weight to less than one thousand two hundred pounds. And that has a seat or saddle designed to be straddled by the operator and handlebars for steering control. Number two, off-road utility vehicle as defined by Iowa Code Section Thirty Two. Excuse me, Three Twenty One. Means a motorized vehicle with not less than four and not more than eight non-highway tires or rubberized tracks. That is limited in engine displacement to less than one thousand five hundred cubic centimeters. And in total dry weight to not more than two thousand pounds. And that has a seat that is of bucket or bench design, not intended to be straddled by the operator and a steering wheel. Or control levers for control. Number three, primary roads means those roads and streets both inside and outside the boundaries of municipalities. Which are under the jurisdiction of the Iowa Department of Transportation, including Iowa State Highways One Sixty Nine, Eighteen, Seventeen, Fifteen and Nine. Number four, roadway as defined by Iowa Code Section Three Twenty One. Means that portion of a highway improved, designed or ordinarily used for vehicular travel. Number five, secondary roads. Means those roadways under the jurisdiction of the Cassuth County Secondary Roads Department. Secondary roads do not include primary roads. Section three, operation on roadways. A registered all-terrain vehicle or off-road vehicle may be operated on all secondary roads during the hours of five AM to eleven thirty PM. In Cassuth County pursuant to the restrictions in this ordinance and those restrictions imposed by the Iowa Code. Section four, unlawful operation. A person shall not operate an all-terrain vehicle and or off-road utility vehicle under any of the following conditions. At a rate of speed greater than reasonable and or proper under existing circumstances. Having due regard to the traffic, surface and other and any other condition existing, but not greater than thirty-five miles per hour. Number two, in a careless, reckless or negligent manner so as to A. Endanger any person including the operator, B, cause injury or damage to person or property. C, create unnecessary skidding or sliding or cause any wheel or wheels to unnecessarily lose contact with the ground. When using a level B roadway, the operator shall use extra caution, especially when the roadway is wet. Number three, without a lighted headlamp, a lighted rear lamp and equipped with at least one mirror. So located as to reflect the operator a view to the rear of the vehicle a distance of two hundred feet. Number four, with a firearm in a person's possession unless it is loaded and enclosed in a carrying case. However, a non-ambulatory person may carry an uncased and unloaded firearm while operating or riding on an all-terrain vehicle. Or off-road utility vehicle. Number five, in any tree nursery or planting in a manner which damages or destroys growing stock. Number six, on public land, ice or snow in violation of official signs prohibiting such operation. Number seven, in any wildlife area, pre- preserve, refuge or game management area or gravel pit owned by Cassuth County. Number eight, upon any portion of a meandered stream or the bed of a non-meandered stream. Which has been identified as an aboriginal stream or river by the Department of Natural Resources and which is covered by water. This provision does not apply to designated riding areas, designated riding trails, the use of crossings for agricultural purposes. The use of construction vehicles engaged in lawful activity and or the operation of all-terrain vehicles on ice. Number nine, on snowmobile trails except where designated by Cassuth County and the primary snowmobile trails sponsored. Number ten, upon an operating railroad right-of-way. An all-terrain vehicle may be driven directly across a railroad right-of-way only at established crossings. This provision does not apply to a law enforcement officer or railroad employee. With authority to enter upon the railroad right-of-way in the lawful permanence, performance of their duties. Number eleven, upon any primary road within Cassuth County. However, such vehicle may be driven directly across such primary road at an established crossing. This provision does not apply to a law enforcement officer in the lawful performance of their duties. Without, number twelve, without first yielding to all other traffic. Number thirteen, with more persons on the vehicle than it was designed to carry. No riders shall be in the box of an off-road utility vehicle even if equipped with seats and seat belts. Number fourteen, on any riding area or trail unless the trail is designed by a sign. As open to all-terrain and off-road utility vehicle operation. Number fifteen, in any ditch within Cassuth County. This does not include farmers who are using their vehicles exclusively as farm implements while engaged in farming. Operation of all other vehicles is confined to the traveled portion of the roadway only. Number sixteen, unless the operator is at least eighteen years of age, has a valid driver's license, the vehicle is duly registered. And the operator has proof of insurance. However, if the operation is between sunrise and sunset and is incidental to the vehicle's use for agricultural purposes. As set forth in Iowa Code Section Three Twenty One Point Two Three Four A, subsection one, paragraph A. The operator must be at least sixteen years of age. Number seventeen, without wearing a properly adjusted and fastened seatbelt if the all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle is so equipped. Number eighteen, without the all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle bearing sixteen square inches of red and white reflective tape. Or a slow-moving vehicle sign affixed to the rear of the vehicle so that it is clearly visible. Section five, requirements. No person shall operate an all-terrain or off-road veh- utility vehicle on any secondary road for any purpose. Unless the operator possesses the following. Number one, proof that the all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle is registered with the Iowa DNR. Number two, proof of ownership, including but not limited to bill of sale, registration and or other documentation. Number three, proof of the operator's age and a valid driver's license. Number four, if the operator was born af- after nineteen ninety-five. Proof of passing an Iowa DNR approved ATV education course. And if the operator. There's a note here. Is under eighteen? Must be the old language. We have a differently. Worded one. I apologize, I thought this was the updated one. Does that one change then? Section five, yeah, number four.
Yeah.
Okay, that one has changed then. Josh has to get some.
Okay.
Just trying to get through this ordinance this one.
Oh, I guess.
Keep reading.
Sure.
Okay, uh, starting again at section five point four. If the operator is sixteen or seventeen years of age and operation is in accordance with section four, sub-paragraph sixteen. Proof of passing an Iowa DNR approved ATV safety course. Number five, proof that the owner and operator have liability insurance covering operation of the all-terrain or off-road utility vehicle on secondary roads. In the amount required by the Code of Iowa. Section six, exempt vehicles. The registration requirements of this ordinance shall not apply to the following described all-terrain or off-road utility vehicles. Number one, all-terrain or off-road utility vehicles owned by the United States, this state or another state. Or by a government subdivision thereof and used for enforcement, search and rescue or official search and studies, research and studies. But not for recreational or commercial purposes. All-terrain or off-road utility vehicles used in accordance with section Three Twenty One Point Two Three Four A, subsection one, paragraph A. Number three, all-terrain or off-road utility vehicles used exclusively as farm implements. Section seven, penalties. Violation of the ordinance shall constitute a county infraction punishable by a fine of sixty-five dollars to six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Plus the applicable court surcharges and costs. An owner or operator who produces to the clerk of court prior to the date of the person's court appearance. As indicated on the citation, the necessary proof that the requirements set out in section five were in effect at the time. The person was stopped and cited shall not be convicted of a county infraction. And citation issued shall be dismissed by the court. Upon dismissal, the court or clerk of court shall assess the cost of the action against the defendant named on the citation. Section eight, separability clause. If any of the provisions of this ordinance are for any reason illegal or void. Then the lawful provisions of this ordinance, which are separable from the said unlawful provisions, shall be and remain in full force and effect. The same as if the ordinance contained no illegal or void provisions. Section nine, repealer. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. It will be effective when we pass it. Okay. Thank you, Tony. If you wanted to.
No, it's okay. Go ahead. Keep going.
Alright. Okay, first reading is complete and then we have, uh, need a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance.
I make a motion for for first reading.
Motion by Whacter. Need a second? Second by Garmin. Any discussion on the motion? Kendall, any word?
Nope, I covered what Todd and I wanted. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, uh, if no more discussion, roll call vote, please.
Haas? Garmin?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes. First reading is passed. And we'll have a second next week?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it is past eight thirty-five, so discussion decision, first reading of amended ordinance five twelve A. Establishing rules and regulations for the protection, regulation and control of all parks, preserves, parkways, playgrounds. Recreation centers and other property of Cassuth County. We'll keep rolling here, okay. Cassuth County Ordinance Number Five Twelve A. Title, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the protection, regulation and control of all parks, preserves, parkways, playgrounds, recreation centers. And other property of Cassuth County and establishing penalties for violations thereof. Be it enacted by the Board of Supervisors of Cassuth County, Iowa. Section one, purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect, regulate and control Cassuth County's. This is the updated one, right? Or just just making sure.
We didn't change that one.
We didn't change, oh, we didn't change this one, okay. Control of Cassuth County's parks, preserves, parkways, playgrounds, recreation centers and other property. Section two, definitions. Number one, board means the Cassuth County Conservation Board. Number two, motorboat means any vessel propelled by an inboard, inboard outdrive or outboard engine. Whether or not such engine is the principal source of propulsion. Number three, watercraft means any vessel which through the buoyant force of water floats upon the water. And is capable of carrying one or more persons. Section three, prohibited destructive acts. Except as otherwise prohib- provided, it shall be unlawful for any person to use, enjoy the privileges of, destroy, injure or deface. Plant life, trees, buildings or other natural material property. Or any structure or to remove any plant life, trees, buildings, sand, gravel, ice, earth, stone, wood. Or any other natural material or to operate vehicles within the boundaries of any county park, preserve or stream. Or any other lands or waters under the jurisdiction of the board for any purpose whatsoever. Except upon the terms, conditions, limitations and restrictions set forth by the board. Section four, speed limit. Except as provided herein, the maximum speed limit of all vehicles on county park, preserve and wildlife area drives, roads and highways. Shall be fifteen miles per hour. The maximum speed limit for the Smith Lake Campground shall be ten miles per hour. All driving shall be confined to designated roadways. Whenever the board shall determine that the speed limit herein before set forth is greater than is reasonable or safe under the conditions found. To exist at any place of congestion or upon any part of the park, drives, roads or highways. The board shall determine and declare a reasonable and safe speed limit thereat which shall be effective when appropriate signs. Giving notice thereof are erected at such places of congestion or other parts of the park, drives, roads and highways. No ATVs are allowed to be operated on any county park, preserve or wildlife area except where designated. Section five, excessive loads. Excessively loaded vehicles shall not operate over county park, preserve or wildlife area drives, roads or highways. The determination as to whether the load is excessive will be made by the board, its employees, executive officer. Or duly designated representatives and will depend upon the load and the road condition. Load limits will be posted as needed. Section six, parking. All vehicles shall be parked in designated parking areas and no vehicle shall be left unattended on any county park, preserve or wildlife area drive. Road or highway except in the case of an emergency or while the occupants are engaged in lawful recreational activity. Section seven, hitching to trees. No horse or other animal shall be hitched or tied to any tree or shrub or in such manner as to result in injury to county property. Section eight, fires. No fire shall be built except in a place provided thereof, therefore. And such fires shall be extinguished when the site is vacated unless it is immediately used by some other party. Section nine, removing plants, flowers or fruit. No person shall in any manner remove, destroy, injure or deface any tree, shrub, plant or flower or fruit thereof. Or disturb or injure any structure or natural attraction except that upon written permission of the board, certain specimens may be removed for scientific purposes. This section shall not apply to the activities of the board or its officers. Or employees when caring for and managing county-owned land and waters under the jurisdiction of the board. This section does not apply to the collection of apples, mulberries, raspberries, blackberries, gooseberries, plums, mushrooms and nuts. Section ten, use of firearms, explosives, weapons and fireworks prohibited, exceptions. Number one, the use of firearms, explosives and weapons of all kinds by a person is prohibited in all county parks, preserves and wildlife areas. Except under the following conditions. A, a firearm, bow and arrow or other weapon authorized for hunting may be used in preserves and wildlife areas or parts of preserves and wildlife areas. Designated by the board as hunting areas or specifically set aside as a firing, archery or trap shooting range. Number two, the use of fireworks as defined by Iowa Code Section Seven Twenty Seven Point Two. Herein incorporated as if set forth in full in county parks, preserves and wildlife areas is prohibited. A person violating this subjection is guilty of a county infraction. In addition to other, any other penalties, the punishment imposed for a violation of this subsection shall include assessment of a fine of two hundred fifty dollars. The court shall order restitution if any damages were caused by the violation which may include, but is not limited to, community service. Section eleven, littering grounds. No person shall place any waste, refuse, litter, glass, can or foreign substance in any area or receptacle except those provided for that purpose. Prohibited, section twelve, prohibited areas. No person shall enter upon portions of any county park, preserve or wildlife area into this regard of official signs prohibiting same. Except by permission of the board, its executive officer or his representative. Section thirteen, animals on leash. No privately owned animal shall be allowed to run at large in any county park, preserve or wildlife area except by permission of the board. Every such animal shall be deemed as running at large unless the owner carries such animal, leads it by leash or chain not exceeding fifteen feet in length. Keeps it confined in or attached to a vehicle or is under the control of the owner. The board or its authorized representative shall make the determination regarding whether the animal is under control. On all county wildlife areas from March fifteenth through July fifteen of each year, all dogs are prohibited unless the owner carries such animal. Leads it by a leash or chain not exceeding fifteen feet in length or keeps it confined in or attached to a vehicle. Section fourteen, closing time. Except by arrangement or permission granted by the board, its executive officer or his authorized representative. All persons shall vacate county parks, preserves and wildlife areas between the hours of ten thirty- areas between the hours of ten thirty PM and four o'clock AM. Areas may be closed at an earlier or later hour, of which notice shall be given by proper signs or instructions. Provisions of this section shall not apply to authorized camping or legal hunting or fishing in areas provided for that purpose. Section fifteen, camping. The board is hereby authorized to fix fees for camping and other special privileges, which shall be in such amounts as may be determined by the board upon the basis of the costs of providing a reasonable value of such privileges. Section sixteen, camping areas. No person shall camp in any portion of a county park area except in portions described or designated by the board. Section seventeen, time limit. No camping unit shall be permitted to camp for a period longer than that designated by the board for the specific county park. Section eighteen, registering, vacating. Any person who camps in any county park shall register the person's name and address with the board, its executive officer, or duly designated representatives. Section nine, camping refused. The board, its employees, executive officer, or duly designated representatives are given authority to refuse camping privileges and to rescind any and all camping permits for cause. Section twenty, ice, sand, and gravel removal, agreement with the board. No person shall remove any ice, sand, gravel, stone, wood, or any other natural material from any lands or waters under the jurisdiction of the board without first entering into an agreement with the board. Section twenty-seven, or, excuse me, section twenty-one, ice, sand, and gravel removal permits. The board may enter into agreements for the removal of ice, sand, gravel, stone, wood, or other natural material from lands or waters under the jurisdiction of the board if, after investigation, is determined that such removal will not be detrimental to the county's interest. The board may specify the terms and consideration under which such removal is permitted and issue written permits for such a removal. Section twenty-two, hunting on game refuges. It shall be unlawful for any person to hunt, pursue, or in any manner intentionally take, capture, kill, wound, or attempt to kill or wound game animals, game birds, or fur bearers as defined in section four eighty-one A point one of the Iowa Code herein incorporated as if set forth in full on county parks, preserves, wildlife areas, or recreation areas except those designated for county, for public hunting. The board reserves the right to set special hunting seasons on county parks, preserves, wildlife areas, and recreational areas as deemed necessary. Section twenty-three, non-toxic shot. Non-toxic shot is required when hunting on all public hunting areas when, under the jurisdiction of the board. This section does not apply to hunting of deer and wild turkey. Section twenty-four, blinds and decoys. Use of blinds and decoys shall be in accordance with regulations for game management areas in the state of Iowa as set forth in chapter forty-one A of the Iowa Code and five seventy-one dash five-one of the Iowa Administrative Code. Section twenty-five, boats. On all water under the jurisdiction of the board, motorboats shall only be operated with one or more battery-operated electric trolling motors. All watercraft shall be operated and equipped in accordance with the laws of the state of Iowa, and all operators shall be governed by the right-of-way rules set forth in the Iowa Code. Motorboats are prohibited from operating in designated swimming areas. Section twenty-six, guns, manner of conveyance. No person except as permitted by law shall have or carry a gun or weapon on his or her person or in or on any vehicle brought or driven on any property under the jurisdiction of the board unless such weapon or gun is taken down or totally contained in a securely fastened case and its barrels and magazines are unloaded. However, a person may have or carry a gun or weapon on his or her person if it is being lawfully used in his designated hunting area, archery, firing range, or trap-shooting range. Section twenty-seven, penalties. Any person, firm, or corporation violating any provision, section, or paragraph of this ordinance shall be in guilty of a simple misdemeanor or county infraction. Each day a violation occurs shall constitute a separate offense. For a county infraction, Iowa Code section three thirty-one point three zero seven shall control and in addition to the provision set out therein, the magistrate may use the compendium of scheduled violations and scheduled fines for analogous violations of the Iowa Code as a guideline for establishing the amount of fine for violating any provision, section, or paragraph of this ordinance. Section twenty-eight, disclaimer. The foregoing rules and regulations do not apply to peace officers or Cassuth County Conservation Board employees while in performance of their duties. Section twenty-nine repealer. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section thirty, separability clause. If in section, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section thirty-one, effective date. This will, this will be in effect when we pass it. Okay. First reading is complete? That was a long one. Then I need a motion to approve this ordinance. So. Motion by Hoz.
Second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion on approving the first reading of the amended ordinance? If not, roll call vote please.
Hoz.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, yeah, we're ready for Doug.
Things can do.
You have my word. You good?
This is Josh in the courtroom. We are up to right of way. Alright. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, we're good. Get this one allowed. For sure. Well, nothing till. True, true.
Discuss that.
Yeah. I don't know if that'll take long. We'll see. It's always interesting, sometimes you look at the agenda and you think, oh, it'll be a quick meeting today, and then it goes all morning, and then the other times you think, oh, my gosh, there's, there's a whole bunch on there, and you get it done in an hour. It all depends.
They're just all along, Howard. Wife always asks me, how long do you think your meeting's gonna take? And I always say, well, it depends.
Kaylee asked me that. How long you think today? I don't know.
I said it depends on who's here and who has a lot to say. Sometimes I think it's a short conversation, and it's a bit long.
Yeah.
Which isn't necessarily bad.
Nope.
Is generally how it works. You're gonna have to get yourself a new calendar.
Yeah. Could've been worse. Could've spilled on my computer, and it didn't, so I'd be happy for that.
The recorder's out of it.
Thank you.
I don't know if the battery's bad enough for her. Oh, the recorder wasn't recording. Does that mean that Carter has to re-read those?
No.
Good morning, you.
Good morning, Doug. We're up to the right of way whenever you are ready.
Um, no, there's no requests for work in the road right now today.
Roll the discussion then.
Uh, yeah, um, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was talked about a little bit. Uh, this would be to the east of Elmore, uh, between Minnesota and Iowa on the Iowa side. Uh, there was a tile that was hit. It is, we believe it's a private tile, and the contractor is supposed to be repairing that. They're supposed to let us know when they're doing it so that we can make sure that's done correctly. Uh, the secondary road collective bargaining unit during summer months, they worked four ten-hour days, Monday through Thursday, uh, ten hours on each one of those days. And it's getting nearer the time to start that, uh, visiting a little bit with our road foreman. We believe that, uh, May nineteenth would be a good day to start that, uh, so a little bit approximately two weeks. Just wanted to make sure the board doesn't have any concerns about not doing that. So, well, then we'll start the four ten-hour days, let our guys know about that on the nineteenth. Yeah, Friday makes a three-day, yeah, four days. Uh, crack filling, we continue on eight forty-two with Bancroft Forest City Road. Uh, that should be finished up this week, and that is the last road we have scheduled for crack filling. Slurry leveling, I talked with the contractor this morning, um, and they are finishing up some crack filling themselves, and then they'll start their slurry leveling. I've got a chance to go out to Western Hills, Carter. I think that we just need to do some patching out there, so we have added that to our patching map.
Okay.
So we'll get that work completed.
Appreciate it.
This summer. Thank you for letting me know about that.
Yep, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. We do have an open position in the engineer's office, couple of open positions in the mechanic shop, uh, getting some quotes ready for equipment, uh, starting to get a lead prepared for Sealco work. So that's kind of everything in the, uh, engineer's office, secondary road department. We did have a pre-construction conference with, uh, with Matthew, and they are looking at beginning resurfacing June second, and that, the first thing that they're gonna tackle is the mile of road between P thirty between eighteen and McGregor. We had at our pre-construction conference, a person with Smithfield, uh, we're set up a group email with Smithfield. We are trying to just communicate everything that goes on there, and hopefully, uh, if we do have to, uh, shut off some of those, uh, entrances, we can either stagger them or have them shut off or allow it. Uh, we might have to extra work, order some water being sprayed on the asphalt to allow it to cool, but we, uh, we discussed a lot of different things, so we'll see how everything goes. Cleanup day, uh, algonic cleanup day, and then the household hazardous waste and transfer station is open Saturday, the tenth, uh, for recycling and household hazardous waste, and then, uh, comprehensive plan. We'll probably put that on the agenda for... Did you say you were trying not to have anything on the agenda for the thirteenth?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we might have to do it on the twentieth then. Uh, just some discussion on that. And that's kind of everything with, uh, with, uh, transfer stations.
Any questions for Doug?
I just had a comment from a constituent that, uh, she said she goes out and runs, I can't remember what road it was, but, um, she just said she really appreciates the drivers and with the dump trucks that they get out around her, slow down, some guys even put on hazard lights, and she said she's just really appreciative of it, so.
Pass a line of work to the guys that...
Yeah, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
A lot of times we hear that, uh, trucks do not do that, but it's good to hear that they are.
Yeah, she's very appreciative of it, so.
Very good. Well, thank you, yes.
Thanks, Doug.
Are you in the office all morning?
I am, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna stop down, I have something, um, that a landowner called me about I wanna talk to you about, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Doug.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, good morning, Marge.
Good morning.
We have some repair requests today? I even, I even finally got a couple of them here.
Yeah, it's kind of...
Mixed bag today.
He's not here today.
He's not here today.
Do we do Kyle's surface hole work next week? Or next week after that?
I could read Kyle's, I don't know. Well, we can still approve to have supervisors take care of the request.
Okay.
I'll read. And he can handle them how he desires. Amber, you can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, yeah, sure. Um, request number twenty-five, drainage district seventy-eight, um, in the northeast of the northwest quarter of section twenty-one Buffalo Township. Um, there's two large holes in the main tile. Marge has twenty-six inch tile marked on there that needs repaired. And then, uh, request number twenty-six, drainage district eight-six, section eighteen of Buffalo Township, the northeast of the northwest quarter, um, the main twenty-two inch tile in the pasture, thirty feet out in pasture, it's broken tile that needs repaired. And then, um, number twenty-seven, which is PAK one, lateral fifty-seven, section seven, Lott Creek Township, southeast of the northeast quarter, um, it's broken tile, washout needs repaired. Actually, um, I did talk to the landowner, and that's, um, he was going in the field, so he did get that fixed already, but the other two, we will need to reach out to someone for, so.
Okay. Josh, go ahead.
Uh, I've got number twenty-three here, um, the northeast, northwest quarter of section sixteen in Eagle Township, um, looks like it's a broken tile that needs repair, thirty-four inch tile. Uh, looks like Anderson tile is already repaired, that was turned by Lawrence Sikolski. Um, the next one is twenty-four, and it's in the northwest, northwest quarter of section twenty-seven in Harrison Township, uh, twenty-inch tile, it's got two broken spots, um, turned in by Jake Oshie, uh, looks like, uh, rightsills are repaired down there, so.
Okay, and I've got number twenty-eight from Monty Tui in section thirty-three of Laverne Township, and I've, I've been out there with him. Don't believe this is actually is a county tile, so, um, we were out there and it, it shows, there's two county tiles running through that field, um, and this isn't close to where, even close to where the maps show, so we were, we did a little investigating. Yeah, it doesn't follow the same course, so it, it must be a, a private tile there, but Larches, we're gonna fix that for them. And then, number twenty-nine in D one thirty-eight, section thirteen of Garfield, Sherry Wagner, and she had called me about this too, broken tile needs repair on the main. Okay, need a motion to have the supervisors handle their requests. Motion by Hoz.
Second.
Second by Wachter, who was excited to read them today. And, uh, okay, any discussion on the repair requests? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Marge.
Did you get, did you get us to talk to Rick Peterson?
Oh, yes, yep. I did talk to Rick Peterson from Humboldt County, he's the board chairman there, and, um, we, we need a joint meeting in order to approve work done in the joint drains district, uh, in Laverne there, because Humboldt County is the controlling entity, and in order for them to move forward with fixing anything, they need our approval on it too.
So they picked Monday?
Right. Next Monday is when they'd like to do it?
Yeah, at nine a.m.
Nine in the morning.
You could call in.
So if, if at least three could call in, um, and even I could call, I'll be on vacation, but I could call in quick if needed, um, but if there's three of you that are able to call in, how does that work?
And I'll send, I'll send the number to you for what you call in, and...
Yeah.
And they'll...
You don't have to come in here.
Right, right.
Right.
You can call.
Call or call.
Yes, yes.
What's that?
What day is that?
Next Monday?
Monday. Monday, May twelfth.
Twelve, at nine a.m. It'll take two minutes.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll certainly intend to call if you send the information.
Yep, yep, I will.
But if you need a third person, let me know, but otherwise, I'll, I, I'm, I'm aware of it.
Okay.
Nine a.m.
No reason not to approve it.
Yeah. Trying to decide if that's a day I'm at a meeting.
Oh, but, but yeah, just so everybody's aware. Send me a...
I'll send it too. Okay. So I'll just put it. Perfect.
Anything else, Marge?
I think that was most of it.
You heard anything from Colin? Or no?
No, I haven't.
I haven't either.
I haven't heard anything yet.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Have a good week. Okay, discussion with the county auditor.
Okay, so...
You're on the stand, Tammy.
Okay. Thursday, nine o'clock, department head meeting.
I will not be there.
Okay.
I'll attend to not be there.
Okay.
Thursday at nine.
Okay. We do have a tour coming this morning from the Westbound Government class.
Oh.
So they may be sticking their head in. They're gonna be here at nine forty-five. So they may be coming in quickly.
Okay.
Do you have a housekeeping interview tonight? And then next week, we have handwritten claim, second reading of the ordinances that you read today, and then accepting the bargaining unit and possible bargaining. So I did send an email to department heads that we weren't taking any more requests for next week because Renee indicated that it would be a busy day. So we're trying to keep it short and other requests short, so we can do that. I think it'll take most of the days. And that's all I have.
Okay. Howard, any meetings?
I don't believe, I don't believe so, though.
Okay.
Nope.
Josh?
House meetings.
I just had the Soothwaste Management Association meeting last Tuesday night. We did not have a quorum, so no decisions were made, but we went through the budget. We needed eight, we had six, so we went through the budget. And all that, so at some point we'll either have a quick meeting again or attain a vote electronically in some form. Stipping fees are not going up this year again, really not a whole lot has changed. Okay, well, that's all I have. We are up to the handbook. Do you wanna... Do you need a break before we tackle the handbook? Shouldn't take real long, but...
I mean, it's up to you guys, whatever.
We'd have to have Donna come over.
Say five minutes.
We'll take, take a five-minute break.
Josh, five hundred.
Five hundred.
Hey, it's Joshua with the boardroom. We got about five minutes here and then we're gonna be discussing the handbook, so. All right, thanks.
There it goes. Good, Tammy, enough time to get some coffee.
I don't know if I wanna get anymore now.
Smell it all then.
Morning, Molly.
Morning. Where are you guys at? Five hundred and thirty-five fifteen.
We're just, we're gonna process it. We're gonna work it out.
Well, I don't wanna tell you.
Not the crucial that it ain't that.
Hello?
Everybody left.
I was gonna say. You might need to work by ten.
At home.
I don't know.
We had our share of problems this week, so.
Haven't you? Kirk started yesterday with Keith, but I think last week, the rain obviously, something broke down. I guess it loosened.
Always something.
Yeah. But this week, still, uh...
Yeah, it looks good, but we've friggered away a couple of days of just noose and stuff. But it is nice.
Oh, yes. Well, no, I know.
Do you want this thing signed and returned to you? I don't, I think I could call Sue. I don't know if she wants to down the church or not, but you want this back right away?
By the night. And if you're, if you think she's gonna add it, let me know. Otherwise, when she's done, she'll qualify and then she can add it then.
So just sign it, give it to her.
She's qualifying, then when she's done, she could have dental. Irrelevant to this.
So I'm gonna say I didn't have one too.
So then, is she taking this up or she gonna add the insurance?
She might ask if she's saving it last week or she might be interested in it. She gave some explanation. She's not sure if she's gonna do it.
Well, I thought Laurie said three weeks. Then I asked Laurie when she was gonna be done and I thought they were prior. Did the new gal start yesterday?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I asked if she was sitting there yesterday. I didn't have attention. And I saw her sit with somebody and I didn't...
Who's she? Laurie or...
No, this, Sue.
Oh, you were there.
I was, yeah, at work or something. Is Daniella or... I don't even know, now that you say that.
But I did, it's not that I, it's not that I didn't specifically ask her, because I wanted to be proactive and be ahead of it, you know, as far as adding, you know, who's gonna be June.
Yeah.
Like, I thought maybe it would be June and she acts like, no.
Yeah. Well, when that occurs, she can do that. She can do whatever she wants or whatever direction we're going.
I think we're going this direction. Might feel a little guilty about it.
I think it would be kinda weird, but I can speak for you.
ATV ordinance? Why don't you guys print this? Uh, it's probably Tammy.
Bye-bye.
I don't understand that there's limitations in there that I try to have you hook up on it with thirty-five miles an hour and after eleven-thirty at, at, not on primary roads. I don't know if there are rules, the state's rules or what they are, but certainly.
I think a lot of them are state regulations and then we basically...
Pick up where they leave off.
Yeah, yeah, because they have their regulations on the state-owned parks and things like that. We need to have the same or similar, you know, to what they have for our parks as well.
Yeah.
Good morning. How's Donna today?
Not too bad.
Can I give you this while you're here?
Sure.
Otherwise, I'm gonna forget.
No, I'll take it.
Here's the card.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's all right. I just got to there and I thought...
Sometimes you get so many copies of things and then it accidentally gets in the wrong place.
It's all right.
The good thing is, you know, what gets published is just a summary, so, you know.
You have to open up mine and go to open that.
I had probably.
Just, good thing you caught it.
Nope.
Hi, Donna.
Well, I did wanna get to the end and realize I need to reread it.
That would be terrible.
I'll give this to you.
You bet.
You just wanna walk backwards, don't you? You see, I think, I think I saw Josh signing his earlier too today.
No, that's perfect. No, it's just hard to...
That's just Laura on that one.
That's perfect. It's better than chasing after.
Kind of soggy profile, I'm afraid. Smell that coffee, there is the end.
Right, goody beer. Oh, I know, it's new, something new.
Never heard of what?
The Gina, the genetic.
Oh.
Whatever that was added. Suppose we just can't prescreen for... Whatever, for insurance or something.
Okay, we're all here, ready to roll.
Well, I have to say, I'm disappointed there's no other department heads here.
I was gonna say.
I did just send them another reminder that we're discussing it 'cause I know you guys had asked them to be here, so maybe somebody will join us, but...
I don't know.
Okay. Pardon me?
I said, here we go.
Here we go. Here we go.
Yeah, we can go through the changes.
So, yeah. The first few pages are just, I don't know which draft you're looking at. I'm assuming you're looking at the draft where they write on the first page.
Yep.
Do you guys want me to print it out so you can write on it? Would that be more helpful?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing that.
Okay, okay. Let me do that. I'm sorry, I didn't even think about that. I apologize.
Don't need to print the whole handbook out.
Just, um...
Maybe just page.
Just a section or a block group, yeah.
So that is, what pages are those then? Can you tell me?
Are page two through...
Nine? Through one point five today?
Yeah.
Yeah, to one point, till eight.
Page eight?
Yeah.
Well, the last part of it's on nine, but yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, there's a little bit on page nine. I'm sorry. Your employment of relatives. I think basically on page one, and maybe this is just for my, my need for clarity. Since this handbook is up there and you've added a few different entities like EMS, so we would need to add that share to sign this. And then, I believe, with the assessor's office, they opt to follow this, but is that documented in place or do we just...
Not that I'm aware of, but unless the assessor has something in their...
I don't know. I guess I just struggle with always knowing who, where, who falls under what.
Mm-hmm.
And quite honestly, I don't remember. But I know that the assessors do, but I think it would be helpful to have it listed.
Well, for sure.
Because we do have conservation, we have VA, we have emergency management. So we would need to add...
And maybe that's just something that, like a conference board meeting, that needs to be acknowledged. Carter, do you think?
Well, the conference board is on there, so it's the conference board for...
The assessor.
The assessor. Okay, that's, okay, so maybe it is on there. Maybe that was my mistake. Okay, so EMS would be the only one. What are you talking about? Just on the signature page, that first, you know, just acknowledgement of who's acknowledging that this handbook's been completed.
Secondary roads has never been...
I know, but that's always the, you guys have the bargaining. So if you go back to the next, when we start in that page four, it talks all county employees are covered by this handbook except... And it says employees covered by collective bargaining agreement?
And I...
But then your office primarily saying?
Well, sheriff's, sheriff signs it. Courthouse used to have a collective bargaining unit.
I know, well...
The courthouse signs it.
See, this is why we don't get past page one.
Close that can, the worms.
No, no, I don't, no, no, I'm just saying, I agree. I think you would sign it.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's ninety-eight times out of a hundred, you know, it's not what I meant to do with collective bargaining. So that's true, but...
And I, I always kinda thought that if it's not in the bargaining agreement, it's...
They're supposed to follow.
They're supposed to follow, then.
But I think it was just the clarity of...
Mm-hmm.
See? So the engineer's office, anybody else that unlistens?
You said you had that, right?
Yep.
I mean, is Carissa's partner?
Well, she's, she is emergency management commission chair is...
Oh, yeah, it's, it's the chair.
The chair. Yeah. So then the introduction, the highlights are in red. I think there were some clarifiers that others could be put in there. Otherwise, the wording stayed pretty much the same.
So through page five, is there something that has to be cleared or...
I don't think so. I was kinda dragging a little bit for Tammy in case she had some comments.
As a department head, the procedure number two, if there's a complaint about sexual harassment at work, the problem should immediately bring the problem to the attention of a member of the board supervisors, the department head, or the county attorney. What happens? Is that supposed to mean that if somebody in the secondary road department is harassed, that they can go to any department head? Does does the department head of that employee, if they are not being accused of sexual harassment, are they notified somehow?
We started, we kind of went through the first.
Yeah, number two was the pages three and four.
I have something about foreman, question mark, and I have your name behind, question mark, so, that in my own writing. So, we've, we've either talked about this, or at least alluded to it, but I think it should be immediate supervisor unless there's a concern of.
You know, when I was on the board, Max Shield, it was immediate supervisor. If you don't get satisfaction, what, the chain, ultimately.
Right.
I, I would say if you don't get satisfaction, ultimately, it comes to the supervisors, right? Or am I wrong?
No, I think you're correct.
Yeah, so maybe there's a.
Unless it is your supervisor.
Right.
Right.
If it is your supervisor, then you gotta go over that next step.
And I don't even, I don't even know what, in, in the county, the next step, past you, would be supervisor.
Correct.
And then, I don't know, there's, there's probably some mechanism if you don't get satisfaction there too, I guess.
Oh, definitely.
But yeah, you'd want, I would think, if possibly, you'd want to go to immediate, your immediate supervisor.
So, we're changing number three to?
Well, we're talking number two here.
Oh.
Under procedures.
Instead of going to the chair to have it be immediate supervisor.
So.
Well, instead of bringing the problem to the attention of a member of the board supervisor, a department head or the county attorney, rather than just a department head or any board member to go to the immediate department head or whatever, um, as a first
Okay.
First line of complaint.
Says that person receiving the complaint brings it to the chair.
Right, right.
And then they would name the impartial investigator.
I guess there's, I, I love the county attorney, and I don't care, maybe the, maybe after the after the department head, the county attorney is the next step. I don't know. Don't care. I, I mean, I can't, you know, I.
Right, but it's hard. It helps if it's clear, so.
Yeah.
Well, paragraph three kind of talks about the person receiving a complaint and what they need to do. So, I think if, if you put the department head, county attorney, some language that, if, if the that after the department head, if there's not satisfactory action, the department head is supposed to automatically notify the chair of the board supervisors. So, the chair is going to know about it right away if
Regardless.
if the steps are followed.
Sure.
But it does say, "Person who receives a complaint shall immediately notify the chair of the board supervisors or appropriate governing body which takes care of the EMA, assessor, EMS, and all that stuff." And, uh, as far as investigations and all that, I, I would definitely ask for advice from our county attorney on that. And I don't know who the impartial investigator is. We don't think they ever have to use it. Again, if that is somebody that county attorney helps with.
So, I can just submit the, first to the immediate supervisors, county attorney, if they're not satisfactory, result. Move on to the county attorney and to notify, so I can submit that to Ann, so she can kind of lawyer word it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, anything on one point two?
Um, I just got a question. Do we have, do we have any training on that anymore?
Yeah, it does say that.
Well, we had it in the handbook that we offer annually, and we've been trying to do that at the safety training. But Ann suggested that we take that section out. I think just because I liked it in there again. This is just my, my answer. It helped rationalize why we're doing it, when we should do it, and that we should do it. I think she was saying, if you put in that it's annually, you know, then if you don't, it, it leads to, out of compliance, so. But we have been trying to incorporate that during our safety day and like this year. We try to have that on Columbus Day, October, I don't know if it's the thirteenth or twentieth or whatever, because the presence of people kind of think we're, they think not always, yeah. Also, we've been trying to do better at that. I think it hasn't always been.
Yeah, 'cause I know that there's an agreement in place.
Right.
To have sexual harassment awareness training held every year.
Yeah, every year.
So, I don't think it specifies it has to be in handbook, but.
Right, so I think we just have to, we have to remember again. I kind of liked it in there. So, it helped me remember, instead of trying to pull other pieces, but I think, um, she encouraged us to keep it clean. One point three is just the wording with I nine. We've been trying to do much better at that to, to on the first date of employment, to get those documentation.
It's very controversial there, right?
No, no, it's just a process to do it.
Very straightforward.
Yeah. One point four, medical examinations. Um, not all of our physicians do have a pre-employment medical examination. A good share do, and so that just gives a wording for that. And then I think section one point five, the only other clarifier for the employment of relatives was the addition of niece and nephew.
Yeah, nothing else to shatter your mind.
Well, now, those first few pages are kind of a breeze. It's almost kind of like, yeah. Then you start getting a little deeper and there's a few more questions, so. I think the, quite honestly, the thing that, the earnings and work hours, that always kind of gets a little complex. Further into, I think it's section one point one. And then I think the other thing that's probably our, been our challenge is to address some of the new areas that have come in.
Right.
Okay, so do we want to review more ne-? No, not next week. The twenty?
Twenty? I, I think we need to, I know we're not drawing a great attendance, but I think we need to keep at it. Despite that, it's been a long process.
And the only reason not next week is because we have some union stuff, so.
Yep, that's no problem.
So, do you want?
Do the rest of section one?
Do one point six to, does it go to one point nine?
Fifteen.
One point, one five?
One point one five.
Okay. We can do that.
Is that too much?
What do you think, Don?
I think that's okay.
Okay, we'll print copies for you guys for next time, if that's helpful.
And just, we'll save this one and just print the rest of it, yeah, yeah, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, is the process then to review and get everything, put it in a final format, have the whole handbook approved? Is that?
My understanding was we were going to try and go through it, get it kind of streamlined, and then bring it to department heads. Um, at department head meeting or whatever, I think that they need to be aware. Because I think that's the sort of the struggle. They're ultimately if they're dealing with employees day to day, and I can always.
Well, we need a, I mean, we have a department head meeting scheduled Thursday.
Right.
It would be good to remind department heads that it, we don't want to take up the board's time with the board reviewing it, and then all of a sudden, we have a department head saying, "We need to change this, we need to change that." We should bring what we feel is a final version to the board for review, in my.
And that's why I felt it important, and the board invited department heads to be here at these meetings to, so they could share their viewpoints when the board is.
Maybe at our department meeting Thursday, we can reemphasize that the board is planning to review, is it the twentieth, did you say?
Yes, the twentieth.
The remainder of chapter one, and it's speed now for every culture.
Yeah, because I kind of feel like it should be done together and not, because you guys do it, and then you come here, and it's almost like we're reinventing.
We're reinventing, and there's so much interpretation, and it's easier to clarify, because otherwise, you just spin your wheels.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, I've got so many little notes on all of this, and it's like, Annie.
Me too.
Start to lose my focus on it.
It's a big job, the handbook.
All right. Well, got through that in the early days. And then health insurance workshop. So, a couple weeks ago, we, obviously, we all know, we were talking then and left things off, um, on what, what to present to employees for open enrollment. And I need to pull that sheet up. Offering a option for high deductible alongside our current plan with a three hundred and fifty dollar employee pay. From what I remember and what I had took away from our discussion a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, we discussed employee share.
If you're comparing two plans, and then, uh, we'd thrown the sixty dollars in there for the HSA.
Correct, yep.
Up to sixty dollars.
Up.
Is what you're gonna say, like if somebody chose to do fifty dollars.
You were thinking like an employer match.
Yeah, up to sixty.
Up to sixty.
What, what you think?
Yeah, and then if they want to do above sixty, we stop at sixty. That's, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, say that one more time.
So, we've, if they opt for the high deductible plan, we would do an employee share or employer share up to sixty dollars into their HSA.
Talking per month.
Match.
Per month.
Yeah, per month.
To sixty dollars.
It's all hypothetical at this point.
Correct.
It's just for illustrative.
Yep, yep.
But you're saying they have to put at least sixty for the county to put in sixty, is that correct?
And if they want to go above sixty, we stop at sixty.
That's how much we'll match, yeah.
Yep. I mean, if they did a match, that'd be a hundred and twenty bucks going towards their HSA.
Didn't you say that there is a limit? How much can be in that HSA?
Yeah, there is.
Depending on your age.
Age.
Okay, okay.
I guess it's in the eight thousands this year, like nine thousand if you're over fifty or whatever, and it don't help you to the.
Is that limited what can be in your account, or how much you can contribute?
In your contribution.
Your contribution.
Kind of like it.
Oh, so you can have more in your account than that?
I believe so.
Kind of like a Roth IRA, you can add X amount a year, but you can have as much as you want in there, yeah.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right. There's no limit to what can be in there, and you don't have to spend it, you don't have to.
Okay.
You don't even have to use it when you have an eligible expense. You can just sit it in there and just have it pocket. You know, again, you get pretty, pretty specific about something, it's still pretty hypothetical, but
Yeah.
You just want to be illustrative.
Right.
I would get bogged down with the.
No, but employees do have questions about those kinds of things, too.
And I think that's what Michelle would be doing too, a lot of, is, is explaining how that works and, and your options and stuff. We need to set up parameters of how it works.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Depending on who, if you get that power, who administers it, what it can be invested in. Definitely, I, there's options in different places, I think.
Well, I think it's, uh, you're talking for the HSA. They, the employee has the opportunity to pick and choose where their HSA goes, so.
But who determines who that, what that offering is?
Yeah, well, I, 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 I don't know. I, I'm not sure. Say, you're right, could be right, I don't know.
Yeah.
My experience, that's there. My, our example is something, someone at her, someone at her work, they, they have a chosen administrator as long as she's I don't know if you can take it out, go over it on your own way or not, I don't know. I'm not arguing with you.
Your, your HSA?
Yeah.
Well, I know, we've got one person here that he brought an HSA with him when he left his previous.
Right, it goes.
And that's, it goes with you.
It goes with you, but.
Sure, if you leave.
Yeah.
But.
But again.
It's like a bank or.
Yeah, the, the, the institution where it is.
Invested or invested where it is.
It's like, my, my, my wife's case, and again, this is getting bogged down with detail, they, uh, they, you know, they had, you could, you could invest in the stock market, you could invest or you could get nothing, but they didn't have, they didn't have a happy ending in their plan where you could get five percent, you know, it was either zero or at the risk of the market. Again, those are details.
I, I wanted to bring up again, I know that we had conversation about it, but as far as the, um, as the single, the single people.
Yep.
Um, if you look at the health insurance survey, um, for the county, there's several counties that the single do pay a portion. The single, I know that we had the discussion before, that, oh, well, it's the families that are driving the cost, not necessarily. The single people might be the people that, you know, benefit from our health insurance without having to give into it and then leave employment.
Yeah, you can have a high cost, single claiming, yeah.
And I, I guess I, in looking at the survey, there's a lot of counties that the singles do pay.
It's over half.
Yeah. So.
And I assume families would then pay more.
I didn't pay that close to attention. I was just looking at the single plan.
Well, I'm looking at it. I gotta go back to the top, because columns, there's a lot of columns.
Well, I think those people that set that, set that as, you know, a single pays this much, and if you have a family plan, you pay this much. It's not that if you have a, if you're a single, you pay this much, but if you have a family plan, you pay this much plus what you're paying for the single. I think it's a either or. You've got, if you're a single, you pay this much. I think it's a either or, you've got, if you're a single, you pay this much, if you are a family plan, you pay this much, it doesn't matter.
Uh.
I think that's what a lot of them do.
Well.
You're looking at ISAC numbers, Amber?
Yeah. So like. You know, it is a difference, um, let's just take first of Benton County. They must have to pay, the county pays ninety percent, I bet the employee pays ten percent. The county pays eighty-two percent, the employee pays eighteen percent. I, I mean, I have no idea for the rationality of their numbers, but, um, it does seem to be different, but there's a lot of counties where the singles do pay. And, you know, it is a very good plan and, and, you know, like I said, not, our people that are here with the families. You know, I, they, they've kinda come here because of our good benefits, actually. The single people might not stay, so there's no contribution whatsoever from them. I, I guess I don't feel like there would be anything wrong in requesting a contribution from our single.
Well, I, I've got a friend who works for conservation down in, um. Oh, counties, down by Des Moines, either way. And I think they can, they contribute a hundred dollars a month as a single fund. So, yeah.
You don't think that's a line jerk for plans, I mean.
It is done, it is done.
Yep, I'm not making the argument, the argument is you're, you're subsidizing the, the family plan to the tune of. Two thousand, let's just say two thousand dollars and the whole single plan only costs a thousand dollars, again, making up the number, you know, so. Sound like I'm arguing, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, the rationale is, you know, so how do you justify subsidizing one employee two thousand and the other one, not even the full thousand?
Maybe that's how you figure it when you decide months, you figure out what the percentage is that the family pays and you do the same percentage for the single.
And maybe that's kinda why those different percentages are on here.
Well, percentage, like I said, Josh, percentage would be easier in the long run.
For sure, probably.
I mean, just, yeah.
But, you know.
Doug, do you happen to know, cause what, what's the family plan right now, what does that cost?
Twenty eighty.
It is what our contribution is?
Yeah.
Two thousand seventy-five right now.
Correct.
Per month.
Boy, it's two fifty.
Two fifty. And so, what percent of two thousand seventy-five is two hundred fifty?
About ten percent.
About ten percent. So.
Well, we were saying three fifty.
Ten percent of eight forty-five, it's eight four fifty.
That's a ninety ten split, you know?
That's easy.
That's maybe where they came over that, well.
Yeah.
Three fifty.
What, what do we pay for the individual?
Ninety-five percent.
Nine seventy-five.
The new, the new rate is twenty-three fifty, so what it, so.
Oh.
You know.
And are we grazing to three fifty?
If we would.
That was the discussion.
That was a discussion, if we would, what percent would that be?
I, I think we wanna steer away from, remember, this is just an illustration, I think we wanna steer away from putting higher numbers to, to try and illustrate.
Fifteen percent. Fifteen percent.
For the next fiscal year, to be clear, the contribution is the same as what it is for current.
Well, yeah, I know, and that's why, I didn't know why they even changed it, you know, on the spreadsheet and as the presentation.
Well, for, for illustrating.
So we can see where.
A possibility of a high deductible offering, the high deductible health plan and what may.
Right, but I was talking about the two fifty to the three fifty.
Well, that's still, it's just illustrating.
Yeah, going to the three fifty, I think was just to see where we need to be be to make sure that we're not, you know, spending down there.
Losing.
Our, um, uh, the funds.
That was our zero point.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I was seeing, wanting to see that that way we knew where we needed to look at if we want to make sure that we're not spending down that fund.
Right. And that addresses the families, but there's also single people that is spending down that fund as well. And those single people are gonna wanna look at those same options. We're not only talking to people with families, you know, that, I guess that's what I meant. By the single, those people who are single are also gonna want to know whether or not they can go to the high deductible plan.
Mm-hmm.
What illustration do we have for them?
Well, that's fair.
Well, they're gonna, and, and Michelle has said, you know, if the traditional, what is being offered is. The benefits are there, why, why would you go to the hell of high deductible health plan? So. As if a single person is receiving the traditional plan at no cost to them. I, I would find it hard to believe that they would go to high deductible, because then they are gonna be taking money out of their paycheck.
Potentially gonna take money out of their paycheck.
Well, they're gonna be signing up instead of having a maximum amount of pocket of fifteen hundred and three thousand, they're signing, or, excuse me, fifteen hundred, they're gonna be signing up. For the first thirty-three hundred dollars of their healthcare to be paid by themselves.
Again, I'm not, not arguing, just being devil's advocate more than anything, but if, if you have a person that's not using anything. Doesn't, doesn't use it at all, hasn't used it all, has no intention of using it all, they might go to the HSA in anticipation of, of funding, of collecting some matching money. And, and I'll risk, I'll risk going from fifteen hundred to thirty-three hundred. I'm not saying they will, I, I, I think you're right, in fact, I think you're dead on, if, if, if the current plan is changed, there's not much, there's not enough incentive to. I, I think if, if all this is about illustrative purposes, with heavy emphasis of this is not necessarily what it's going to be, but if it did go to this. These would be the options, you know, it act, it's gonna have to be something like, yes, your single plan is gonna cost you one hundred dollars a month for two hundred, or ten percent, or twenty percent. And, and your, your family would, so just, just throw twenty percent at it. So next year, the, the family plan's gonna cost the county twenty-three seventy-five?
Twenty-three fifty.
Plus the two, plus the two fifty.
Twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one hundred, I'm just, yeah, I was just.
Okay, so twenty-one hundred plus, and the, and the, and the single plan is gonna be?
It was eleven hundred, I can't remember, sorry, Howard.
Yeah, okay, so, and, and so if, if, if you talk twenty percent, and I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not, so twenty percent would take the, would take within the, uh. To four hundred and twenty dollars and, and two hundred and twenty dollars and, and then HSA, you know, might not cost you, for illustrative purposes. If there's enough savings there, it might not cost you anything. Does that make sense? If there's enough savings, then go in that direction.
Right.
Because you're anticipating what the whole.
The premium will go down, you know, instead of less, you know, the payments, eighty percent of twenty-one hundred, maybe the total cost is fifty hundred. I have no idea.
Calculating.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know what you're saying, Howard, and, and that's for a twenty-six-year-old guy with no health issues, that's where I'm at, you know, I mean, it'd be a no-brainer.
Right.
But.
The whole point was we don't under, nobody understands what the HSA plan is, so you want it, you know, this is what it is. You're not looking for a reaction to the, to the specific numbers, you're just, because that's not what you said, you have no, you don't know, you don't know if you could, is that right?
So if you're talking the May twenty-ninth meeting, I think we're really overwhelming and putting a lot of emphasis on what we think or what we guess or how it work out. I don't know, I think, while I'm fearful, I think employees need to know, I think if we start throwing all of this a year and a half before any decisions made. I think we're just causing a lot of anxiety.
We have, we have to give them some information.
We have to give, no, I think a general overview of what it is, but I think if we start really tit-tat and trying to think we're gonna come down to numbers.
Not exact, no.
No, I think we're spending way a lot, too much time on that, because I think we, you guys can't know.
No, we can't.
But I think we need to educate them, and I think if, and then if it's truly coming to where this is, is a decision that's made, you have another meeting. Before open enrollment, so you can give them those numbers. But I think right now, we're a year and a half ahead of trying to guess and decisions haven't been made here.
Well, and on the point, I, the point of all this was so that we could educate them on what a high deductible plan could look like, because they didn't want that sat in their lap. So we have to follow through with that.
We do.
We have said, I mean, because we have said, if we're gonna keep this the same, we need to educate.
Right.
And so we definitely, we, we have to educate. But you have to give them something to look at to be like, oh. Yeah, maybe this would be a good, if, if it's just status quo, that eliminates purpose.
And, and I don't know how full your schedule is for our October, whatever, you know, it, if they're given the information at open enrollment. And then it can be expanded on more in October, if you have time that day, that's a good opportunity to address that issue again. Because then they'll have time to look at it, maybe do some research of their own, have some questions, you know, ready that they wanna ask, just an idea, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, more discussions are gonna be had as far as the details, everything, and later near what the board wants to do, what numbers we wanna work with, and exactly how we want things to look. But, but yeah, for educational purposes, I don't see what, anything wrong with the three fifty and, and the sixty dollars, you know, or three fifty contribution. And then sixty dollars, and just presenting that as an option, here's just comparing what a high deductible plan is, how it works, how it would compare to a traditional plan or, or that the county would offer. I don't see why, you know, for educational purposes, it's not that this is exactly how it's gonna be.
Right.
This is gonna be your, you know, monthly contribution next year, or this is gonna be, we're gonna have an HSA and contribute this or not, but this is just for educational purposes. I, was that, is that fair or?
I do think if you were thinking about adding single to that, you need to tell them that, because singles will think, well, this isn't gonna, you know.
Singles. Then you apply to me, so why would I even consider it?
So I think if that's something you're considering, you need to at least give them that bit of information.
Sure.
We think so, too.
Sure.
Because we have, what, forty-three, forty-three single policies, I thought? That's, that's a lot of people.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I mean, if you're looking at it at ninety-ten, you're looking at about a hundred dollars, but.
I'd say a hundred dollars is good and it's.
And you, I.
I think they need some.
Hey, for, I don't think for educational purposes, you, you get, you need to get bogged down with those numbers that accrue that, you know. It might be there's an HSA next year, there might be an HSA offering, and you might be incentivized to go that direction. Here's what an HSA is and here's what it looks like, do we know what we're gonna do? No, we don't know.
And I think too, while, um, while we're talking employee contributions, I think we should move to going with, um, percentages. Versus just setting a dollar amount for a month, you know, per month. Um, because you can still figure out that, that dollar amount based on what the, you know, county contribution is gonna be. What the employee share is gonna be, you know, for each year, and, and that can change, you know, year to year as our numbers change as well, so. And I think if we can tell the employees, you know, we're looking at doing, say we do ten percent for single, fifteen percent for family. You know, then, then we can kinda figure in what that percentage could look like and we're not setting it to a specific dollar amount. And then when we present that to them and say, so as a single, you would be, you know, paying a ten percent of. What your, what your, um, policy is, and then as a family, you'd be paying fifteen percent. Or you can go with the high deductible plan, plan with the HSA where the county matches up to sixty dollars.
Why would you do different percentages for single and then mainly?
Just based on the numbers that we were kinda discussing, because two fifty, um, a month would be ten percent, three fifty a month would be about fifteen percent. And I think it'd be easier to move to a percentage versus doing just a set dollar amount.
Right, I agree that, but why, wouldn't you have the same percentage being paid?
Well, we said a hundred bucks, right, for the, you were, you were just basing your percentages off the numbers that were thrown around.
Yes, yeah, that's.
So for, for this, though, do you think that instead of muddying the water, because they're used to paying a set dollar amount for this purpose for May twenty-ninth, we should just use. A specific dollar amount? And not tell them you could be paying fifteen percent, and then you have to put a dollar amount in there to show what it would look like, correct?
Well, you can figure out what that dollar amount is based off the percentage, because we know what it would be.
But they don't, the employees don't know what's paid, they have no idea.
They don't. No, they're just looking at.
How much their insurance costs.
This dollar and this is what's coming out of my paycheck.
No, what I'm saying is, is based on if you're a single or if you're a family, you'd be paying this percentage, which calculates out to this dollar amount. But if we set it to a percentage, then it allows for fluctuation year to year.
No, and I see where you're going with that, and I, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, and we can still tell them the dollar amount.
Conversation, but.
Yep. We can still tell them the dollar amount, because it doesn't differ from one family to the next family on what the contribution is. So if we figure out, okay, fifteen percent is this number, we can say you'd be paying fifteen percent, which is this number, we're still giving them a number. But we're, we're locking it in as a percentage versus a set dollar amount, that, then we need to go back and look at that dollar amount and say, is this dollar amount sufficient? Or we can just look at it each year and say, well, we're at fifteen percent, fifteen percent will change as our premiums go up. But when we set that at, you know, when we were discussing our, our yearly premiums and everything with Walmart. And we say, okay, this is what the family contribution, this is the single contribution, we stick with that ten and fifteen percent, this is the dollar amount that the employees are gonna pay for the next year. They're still gonna know that dollar amount, it's just gonna be based off of a percentage versus just setting a dollar amount and then.
They, the employees don't know what total contribution to the fund is, that's, that's one of the problems.
That's, yeah, I was gonna say, that's gonna add.
So ten percent of what?
They all.
Fifteen percent of what? And, I mean, that's fine, you can say that, but ultimately, you're gonna have to tell them dollar amount, they're gonna have.
You can still tell them the dollar amount, because we'll know what the county contribution, what the contribution is gonna be.
I understand.
To that, and then we can say, you'd be paying, as a family, you'd be paying fifteen percent, which is this dollar amount based on what we're contributing this year. So we can still tell them the dollar amount.
I think, I think you can, if you wanna set it by percentage, you can, but I don't think you need to tell them that, because that's just gonna confuse them.
Oh, right. Yeah, I do think it adds a little bit.
I think just telling them an, an expected amount is the better.
I, I, I think you still need to justify why it's that dollar amount, and you can say it's this dollar amount based on fifteen percent.
If they knew what those amounts were, yes, but they don't.
They're, they're just worried about their own bottom line.
Yeah.
But, you know, and, and as a board, yeah, that's probably a discussion that we have to have and make that decision if we're going with a percentage going forward. But to them, that percentage is just a dollar amount, this is what it's going to be, you know?
But for, for May twenty-ninth's purposes, a dollar amount, I think, probably, I mean, they need, they need a dollar amount. I don't, I, I don't disagree with you, Josh, as far as where you're going with that, and that's certainly gonna be discussions we're gonna have.
Yeah.
If we make changes to anything, but, um, but just for educational purposes, using just hard numbers, here's what this number looks like and here's what this number looks like.
Okay, so, just to clarify, we are gonna say, um, single now will potentially contribute a hundred dollars, is that what you, as we're kinda saying?
I would like to say that, I mean, that's my opinion.
As an incentive to, you know.
Well, otherwise. Well, otherwise.
Incentive to move to, I have Dr. Paul with an HSA.
Yeah, otherwise there isn't one.
So then, family, are you saying three fifty or two fifty?
I think, excuse me, I think you're setting yourself up for another backlash of, oh, you told us three fifty, you told us a hundred. This is never, and I'm not saying it has to happen, the health insurance program, it's the same way it is if we can afford it, and we don't, and we wanna raise taxes, but when people, and, and maybe the county's a special place, and, and there's special benefits, and there's special everything, but these things don't happen without harsh incentives. It is a hundred dollars a month, take my word for it. You're gonna stay on the Cadillac, gold-plated, diamond-encrusted plan, you're gonna spend seven hundred dollars a month. And if you wanna go to an HSA, we can lower, we can maybe, and I, but I don't wanna say those numbers next, or in, on May twenty-ninth either. I'm just telling you, if you, if you mention a hundred and three, one hundred and three fifty of percentages, you know, they're, they're, they'll come back, they, the, the people affected will come back in here and say, you didn't prepare us for this. If you really, and if, if we don't want this to happen, that's fine. If, if we, if we're willing to keep raising taxes to pay for it, that's fine. When, when X Y Z corporation decides they're gonna lessen their cost of health insurance to the company, or, and, or, and I don't know how that, I don't know how that jives with protecting the fund, I have, I don't kind of fully comprehend all that. It, you can do whatever you can afford, or choose to afford, but you're not gonna get there. I don't think they're gonna get there talking one hundred dollars and three hundred and fifty dollars, I just, you're not gonna incentivize someone to move. And, and maybe you don't want it, that's fine, I, I do not have an agenda, I, I don't.
I think the big thing is, no matter what, we want our, we want employees to be the best consumer of healthcare that they can be. And there are possibilities to, with, with health savings accounts, where they become more responsible for their own healthcare. Because they are paying for a greater percentage or whatever, but it also gives them an opportunity, if they are, the wiser they are with their healthcare choices, the possible savings that they can personally gain. And just what Howard was saying, you, you've gotta put it in a way that they can see that possible gain for themselves personally.
I, I, I can't, I wanna repeat myself, but I, I don't know how, I don't know how you, I don't know how you present it without talking specific numbers ahead. But, but this is an HSA, this is, this is, we, yeah, I don't, I, I.
I think we put in really harsh numbers, that's what's gonna give us the backlash. And I get what you're saying, which a more harsh number, because.
Oh, I, no, I don't wanna put in any number.
No, but I mean, I get that, but if we do, if, if we're thinking about going to a change like this, I mean, there again, I think we've gotta start a little bit slow, and maybe that's just crazy if you need to think that anybody would even take it, but I don't. If the high deductible plan is going to be pushed by the board, we need to present them what that's going to look like. And right now, maybe you just want, I mean, yeah, right now, if we went with this year's numbers, yeah, it's gonna be zero and two fifty for the employee share, but, okay, you can't do that. So you, and to me, you have to do something on the single side to put something in that might look like, this, this is what that might look like. It would still be a savings to them, because they're gonna put in, say, they put in sixty dollars a month. If they go to the high deductible, the county's also gonna put in sixty dollars a month. Well, it's a hundred and twenty dollars a month versus, okay, well, if I do this, I'm gonna, it's only a hundred dollars, I don't know. Yeah, I don't even know if that makes sense, what I just said, I, it makes sense in my mind. But, I mean, there's, where's the incentive, where's, you know, that's what we gotta look at. Which? Are we, I'm just gonna say that, do we even have to go with a high deductible plan, or we just leave it as is and say, hey, you group might have to be paying more in the future?
Always an option too.
Yeah.
Cause, I mean, and, yeah, I, cause if I'm looking at just my bottom line, and if I'm paying a hundred dollars a month as a single, and my deductibles, so what is it, a thousand, two thousand? Yeah, so, um, I'm looking at paying twenty-two hundred dollars a year total towards my, between my contribution and my deductible, and potentially I could spend thirty-some hundred dollars in my deductible of the high deductible plan. I, I'm just being hypothetical here, you know, if, if you're one, if you're a user of healthcare, then the hundred dollars a month, you're, you're still, you're still less than what your deductible would be on the other plan, that's my, that's my only point.
Then on the flip side of that though, too, if you're a very healthy person, single, and, and you're saving that much each month, plus putting towards an HSA, building that account too, and you're not spending as much, you're benefiting from an HSA and high deductible.
Right.
Even at a hundred dollars a month, because, you know, you're not paying the hundred dollars.
Right.
And putting in sixty, and you're getting sixty back.
Maybe you are still paying a hundred dollars, but it's going towards an HSA.
Uh, yeah, exactly, and, and maybe that, that could be, yeah, what they decide to do, but, so.
And that's where I would be at, I mean, just, I don't, I wouldn't use the whole deductible on just me, you know, as a single person, it is, yeah, so.
Healthcare could be humbling out of caution in there, too.
Oh, I know, I know, and that, and that can change tomorrow.
So a single is one thousand with a two thousand max out of pocket?
Current?
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred, right, out of pocket?
One thousand fifteen hundred, a family is?
Two thousand deductible, two thousand dollars out of pocket.
So the fifteen hundred m- max out of pocket plus the twelve hundred dollars, I think that would be. It's all, it's all about philosophy and what, what you think.
Every person's different.
Some, yeah, some people.
And every person can change tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Well, I like the idea of, for May twenty-ninth, presenting that, uh, we may move to a contribution of a hundred for single, three fifty for family, with the op- option of having the, um, high deductible with an HSA, with employer match of up to sixty dollars per month.
That's what I have down there, yeah.
Yep.
I think that'd be fine.
And this is, just to put it out there, this is not exactly what we're doing, this is what we're presenting as a
Starting point.
Theory, hypothetical, this is what we could be looking at doing next year, it could change.
So then what, if that's the, if that's the old, old plan, or the plan we had, what would the high deductible look like then? What would, what are the costs gonna be for that, you're saying?
It was, uh.
That's what he was saying, up to sixty.
No, no, but the cost of the insurance itself.
Oh, oh.
Well, we were
We, you just.
Talking this, the county contributions would stay the same. Which in, in, just looking at the family, we were looking at about a hundred thousand dollars savings with that.
Cause we were about a hundred thousand in the red with status quo, which is why we were shooting for that zero, so it'd be about a hundred, we, and we got to pretty much zero on both changing the family contribution on the one, and what we were contributing towards the HSA on the other. So, yeah, it'd be about a hundred thousand.
Thank you. I think it's important not to talk about, when we're talking about this, not to talk about the fund, I guess, if we're
Two different things.
Busying with employees.
I think that's fair enough, and I mean, that just, at least it's a starting point.
Yeah. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Anything else?
So you're gonna, are you gonna try, you're gonna try to explain, uh, this is an HSA, this is your HSA account, this is, this is your money, it goes with you, you don't have to spend it, you can spend it.
Michelle will, yeah.
We are gonna have to visit a little bit with Michelle to get her opinion on, on this as well.
Sure.
So, um, if, if it, I think Donna and I can visit with Michelle and move a little bit forward. Tammy, if you'd like to be in on that discussion, we can figure that out, or we should be making a call soon.
Yeah, cause I think she needs to know.
She is planning on coming up that day, right?
Yeah.
Nope, that'd be great.
What is it, is that an hour long approximately, this book?
Typically, historically, we have done that, and I think we probably, since there's not changes this year, I don't think that there needs to be much information, other than we kinda try and remind of Dr. On-Domian, remind of, you know, a few things that they can do for their healthcare coverage. Hopefully, we can keep that with an hour, hour and a half. Depending on how much she feels like it's good to go into the weeds, I mean, I think keeping it simple would be better.
And will she be available to meet with people individually?
She did, she did indicate that she would be able to, we did not set those dates.
Because that might be helpful for people who are just maybe not willing to ask the questions in the bigger person.
Yeah, and I think that would be a different day, or different days, depending on how many people would like to have one-on-one sessions with her, but she did indicate that she would, yeah, so you could talk specifically about.
I think that would be, I think that would be very helpful to employees.
She said she would, but we haven't set those dates.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you both, and.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Just a quick thought I had, um, just out of curiosity, do, yeah, could we check with Michelle and just see if she would be available for, you know, phone calls too, so that way, some people had, uh, questions about it, and they can't set a specific time when she's gonna be here to meet a person who, like, say, like, yeah, yeah, so like if, you know, possibly could use your office or.
During work hours, so.
Yep, yep.
I don't know why people would not be able to meet with her.
Well, if they've got planned vacation or something during that time, then.
Well, I think we could schedule.
Most, most.
They'll work it out.
I guess I would be sensitive to her time for, I mean, just calling, depending on, and
Sure, yeah.
I think it's gonna be pretty difficult to try and sort through somebody's situation through a phone call.
We can maybe stagger her, ask her if we can stagger, but not have her just come up for two, two days in a row. Maybe she could come up one day in June, one day in July.
Yeah, that would work, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
Well, we've gotta get, we've gotta have an understanding from the employees to commit that they're interested in that.
See how it's planning.
Her sitting, I mean, I guess I'm trying to be as respectful of her time as possible.
Yeah. Yep, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Going, going, going on, anybody, do you have your?
Josh?
I'll bring it to you.
Okay.
I was just taking the opportunity to grab it.
Cause Howard gave her one, she walked out, and then came back, and then I gave her one, she kinda walked out and take it somewhere and come back.
Well, I put it back in my box.
And then Amber goes, yeah, I got one.
I took stuff with my other stuff.
I'll, I'll bring it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, any, anything else, what were you doing? If not, need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second. Motion by Garmin, second by Waxter. Any discussion on adjournment? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or any ayes, motion carries the answer.
I didn't say aye, I'm sorry, aye.
Amber opposes, she wants to keep, keep the meeting going.
It's not eleven.
It's not eleven, you said.